Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Emily Truman. I serve as the 2025 Chairman of the Gates County Board of Commissioners. I'm joined tonight by Vice Chair Jonathan Craddock, Commissioner Nathan Berryman, Commissioner Ryan Roundtree, Commissioner Dave Forsythe, County Manager Scott Sauer, who will be acting as Clerk, and County Attorney Pitt Godwin. And thank you all for joining us for another delayed meeting of the Gates County Board of Commissioners, because snow has been upon us lately. So we appreciate you all being able to come out tonight. I'm going to ask Commissioner Roundtree if he will provide the indication and lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you, Lord, once again. Us gathering together to cut up government business for Gates County. Give us insight, give us wisdom, give us direction. Lord, we thank you, Lord, for good success. Lord, we ask, Lord, that you would help us, Lord, to make wise decisions, Lord, that would benefit our constituents, the community, and that we utilize the resources and the infrastructure that we have in place in a positive way. Thank you, Lord, and we ask for these blessings. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Roundtree. The revised agenda has been placed on the top of your packet. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda as presented?
Yeah, I'd like to ask, if we could, I'd like to set us out right after public comments, an opportunity for our Sheriff to talk to us about current events, some things that have been happening.
Okay. So we have, all right, Sheriff, for current events, you said after public comment. Okay. Are there any other changes to the agenda requested?
We do have an amendment to our audit contract. A copy was emailed out to the Board earlier this evening.
Okay. And that will be added in under Budget Amendments, under New Business A, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. So we have those two. If those are all, if we could have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Some are seconded.
All right. And we are going to now begin. It was requested after one of the trainings we went to, to do a voting by a show of hands. So we are going to ask for a vote of approval. So all in favor? All right. Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. We have our agenda approved. And the consent agenda, we also have in the packets. Are there any questions about the consent items, or does anyone feel, or anyone need clarification on any item? If not, a motion to approve the consent agenda is in order.
Madam Chair, so move.
I'll second that motion.
All right. All in favor?
Ah.
Okay. Any opposed? All right. And so the consent agenda has been approved as well. We are going to move into the public comments. Mr. County Manager, do we have any public comments?
Yes. First up, we have Dr. Althea Riddick to speak on the salute to the Black History Month.
Good evening, Chair. Y'all looking good up there. I greet you, County Manager, Mr. Sauer, County Attorney, Mr. Godwin, Commissioner Berryman, Commissioner Craddock, Commissioner, I think that's Mr. Roundtree, and of course, the Chair. And I'm going to greet Commissioner Forsythe. I actually called his name. For two years, before I get into my presentation, never called my name, never even recognized who I was. Came in here this afternoon, walked right by me, didn't shake my hand, didn't look at me, but all the rest of you did, and I thank you. I stand before you to give recognition for an article or a handout that's in the Gates County Index. I read the Delaware paper, so I came too. It's called Crossroads 2025: No Place Like Home. See, I get the paper on Wednesday, some of you do, comes to my house in the mailbox. So before I got dressed, I went and looked at it, and I saw this, and I want to lift up something about Black History Month, because I think it's important that all of black history is not dead. We have people who are actually doing things now. And in this crossroad, it says Gates County Community Partnership. Nice article by Cal Bryant, talking about what this organization does for this county and been doing it since 2018. Nice picture. There's Mr. Roundtree right there. There's Shante, she's the now President, and there's Ben Saunders, who is Vice President. And then they have two others that are not pictured. But I'm going to read some of this, not all of it, because I want you to buy a paper. Cal will appreciate it. But it's talking about this group prides itself in helping to develop bright young minds. It's guided by a Board of Directors whose background and upbringing lie within Gates County. GCCP benefits from a range of professional skills, individual experiences, and the generosity of volunteers dedicated to the betterment of their home county. Every last one of them came through this county. Every last one of them graduated from Gates County High School. Every last one of them have given back. It says this current Board of Directors are Shante Jordan, President, Benjamin Saunders, Jr., he's the Vice President and Treasurer, Shirley Jones, Jr., Secretary, Brian Roundtree, Director, and Sandra Jordan Branch is also Director. Now, these are not just ordinary people. They do extraordinary things, and they give them back to their community. Ms. Jordan, who holds several degrees from East Carolina University and has worked for over 20 years with Gates County Public Schools as a Human Resource Director and Exceptional Children's Program Director. She says the partnership has recently been engaged in the initiation of projects to address certain topics, and I get to that in a minute. I'm not going to read it all, it's going to give you highlights. But Jordan feels that academic enrichment, mentoring initiatives, and educational partnerships, all programs fostered by these organizations, have made the biggest impact thus far on the lives of local students. Saunders, an engineering graduate of North Carolina A&amp;T State University and the University of Detroit, he's the founding charter. His father helped him do that. So he's the founder. He was President until last year. He decided to step aside and give Shante a chance at it. And it states, "We are adamant about access for all and have not charged for any programming directed towards the community we serve, as we want to ensure that everyone can participate." That's what Mr. Saunders said. In addition to the Saunders Science Scholars, he pointed to three other programs. The Access Initiative, which the donation of over 140 laptops to local students and funding for 15 mobile hotspots for local internet access. You saw that in the paper not too long ago. They do it every year. Not one dime does he ask from anybody. They raise that money, they get donations, and they give them to deserving students who can't afford them. Opening gates activate futures that has provided college readiness programming and college tours to dozens of local youth. They take these students out of this county and show them the possibilities at institutions. They can also go to college if they so choose. The North Carolina Promise Tuition Scholarship, that has funded the first year of college tuition for 10 Gates County high schools graduates. They give scholarships. They do all they can to ensure that all youth in this county are exposed to the possibilities, and they take down barriers where they can. So I just wanted to come here and just share this with you. If you get a paper, it's in there, in color and everything. I think it's fantastic. Look at this. I think it's fantastic. And I'm looking at that camera, because I know they can see me at home. One time, that wasn't up there. Guess who had that put up there? I did. Because I wanted the citizen to see people standing here. I'm going to tell you why. Acting the fool. Got y'all on camera. Looking good. But Jones, who served 30 years in the U.S. Air Force and currently works for the National Aeronautics Space Administration, NASA, he spoke for Veterans Day last November. He's part of this group as well. Sandra, she's part of this group as well. She works tirelessly trying to raise money, and she is employed over in Elizabeth City. So black history is not about all the shoulders we stand on, and it is, but we have some young soldiers on the wall from this county that are doing great things. And I know Black History Month just about over for y'all, but it ain't for me. 28 days, we live black history every month and every week. And I just wanted to lift them up and let them know that we appreciate everything they do from this podium, and I know the Commissioners do the same. And I welcome them to sometime come here and do a presentation for five minutes, so they can understand, y'all can understand, and the county can understand what they do in the background. They work. And finally, segueing from black history, there's also an article in here about Ray Felton and what he does for the county, since he's been, you know, working on a Board of Education and before, giving back to the county. So when you see me come up here, and I was at the Board meeting, the Board of Education meeting two months ago.
We're exceeding beyond five minutes, way beyond now, at this point. Just to be fair to all the community, I got no problem with what she's saying is being valuable, but we'll need to make sure we assume that for anybody else that comes, exceed accordingly.
I will close in a minute. Mr. Felton has done wonders. The Board of Education deserves better than what they're getting. I will sit, I don't see a clock. That's one thing we have, and we came up here, we could see. So I'm not talking about, I'm talking about I cannot see that clock. My thing is this, and I'm taking privilege now, which is going to do to me. I did this because I want you to understand, it's not all about negative all the time. You don't have to be ugly just because you can. So thank you for your time, Madam Chair. I appreciate it. I apologize if I made you uncomfortable, but you'll be okay. Thank you.
I'll be all right. Thank you. All right. Do we have anyone else?
Yes, ma'am. We have Mr. Erna Bright from Sunbury to speak on broadband disruptions and waterline cuts.
I'll do my best to keep it under five minutes, if I can, but we've got a lot of problems here. It looks like, I'm sure, if you live in your right now, wide over that way, your water system has kind of gone down the tubes on Friday and Saturdays for some reason. And we are having another internet provider that's already in most of the county now, Spectrum. They received funding back, I think, we got it right today, around 2,000 and somewhere around 1,500, there and back, on the ARPA funds. And their contract to get their federal money expires in 10 days. So they're plowing in the snow, rain, it doesn't matter. They have cut the water lines terrible several times, drops through the house, you name it, and they're tearing it up. They're working in the right of way of the DOT. We can't tell them they can't come in here and do it, but they're supposed through Mastech, which is a subcontractor, to notify DOT that they're going to be plowing. And we asked them early on, when all this started years ago, to notify the county, but they haven't done it. I called Raleigh, I talked with the North Carolina Department of Information Technology, and kind of got to run around there like we have in the past. So that's why, right now, they are over in that section, putting in fiber optic or the subduct right now, because they had a part of the contract that was originally from ARPA money. And we're past ARPA, we're past CAB, and we're in the B now, and Bright Speed is still left. I hate to say it, but they're going to be plowing over there too. And they're going to be up in Corpeet. They put it in the air, so prepare for more cuts. That's the best I can tell you. I have sent pictures, talked to the Vice Presidents and President with Spectrum for North Carolina and the Southeast Region. I have their phone number, and I don't have any problem calling them, and believe it or not, they do respond back to me. I've talked with Manager Sauer, and give them his contact numbers and him their contact numbers. So I don't know how we can handle it. We have right of way to worry about with the Department of Transportation. We have easements to worry about with power lines where they're providing. There's several entities involved, and I feel for Ray. He said to go out there the same days in the rain and mud and stuff like I have, telling the guys, "North Carolina, you have to have cones out." There's something called TMS, and TMS applies to utilities as well as fire departments and DOT. If you're going to block the road, you've got to have a flagger. You have to have cones out. They have been doing none of that. So I don't know what the county can do. It's going to be a hard thing to enforce, but take my word for it. I have been calling them every day, sending them emails every day, and hopefully we can get this ended real soon. They told us there was only 35 locations left that didn't have internet, or 181, Scott Pierce and myself narrowed it down to 35. We tried to challenge that. They would not allow a challenge, because AI says a pigpen needs internet, a chicken house needs internet, a dog kennel needs internet, because someday, somebody might be there, a dog might be able to, I don't know, we've got some smart dogs now. But that's kind of what we're running into. I thought this was, it's bad that we have free providers on some roads when places where we're going to have one. But it looks like, when all this is said and done within six months to a year, everything that looks like it might want internet or could possibly have internet, it might be available to you. And as the end user, I would be real careful with the provider that I pick. They are by law required to give you this entry level right now that you signed up for. They're going to bug you and want you to change your package and do more setting charge you on. Don't do it. It's written in stone, so to speak. But I'll just let you know, and citizens, we're working on all these things. We haven't forgot you. If I can, I might run out of time, but.
You're good. You're good.
Need to ask any questions for me, that what we've done, or what I have been doing with Ray and the Water Department for the last two weeks?
I just thank you for all of your work and the information that you're able to provide. It's been incredibly helpful, because I would not personally have, I know, been able to keep up with any of it without you. So I appreciate it, and I know that you are a phone call away, so that's also helpful.
Yeah. And cleaning up after themselves, if they haven't cleaned up, I finally, we threatened, I may have threatened, probably couldn't, you know, "If you don't come pick these fiber rolls up, county is going to do something with them." Next week, they were gone.
Right.
And there was over six miles of fiber left on the ground between three providers, between two providers. And that's a lot of money left there. So it's not sitting in front of Callahan Morgan, it's not sitting on 158 out here. Well, that one might still be there today, but some more that they're gone. There's still height issues. Being the government like government is, General Assembly listened to the Farm Bureau Federation and the group we've been working with, they presented a bill before the North Carolina House. The House was written, and it's gone to Agricultural Committee to die about keeping the heights up. The utility companies, power companies, especially with the price of poles, heights, whatever, saw to it that it's there. If you know anybody at Agricultural Committee, get them to get that thing going. That's the only way we're going to get anywhere. And our local representative is in on that too, so he's helping us there.
Sounds great.
They have $190,000, they have $1,900,000 to use in North Carolina to replace poles. Billion with a B. Think about that.
Yes, sir. Why, thank you.
If there are any questions, I'll.
Yeah. Thank you. Is there anyone else on the?
That's it.
Okay. All right. We'll follow in public comments. We are going to move into the amended portion of the agenda and ask Sheriff Campbell to come up. He's going to be sharing on some current events.
Good evening, folks. Mr. Godwin, Commissioners, Mr. Sauer. First things first, I want to thank each one of you for answering my phone calls last night, because I needed, I needed to talk to somebody, kind of get it off my chest a little bit, because I was rung up. I appreciate you returning my phone calls and talking with me last night. And I'm going to be as quick as possible. I promised my wife I'd be on my very best behavior, I wouldn't use any bad language, so I'm not going to stay up here very long, because I'm afraid I'd break that promise. I am passionate about what I do. I'm passionate, you know, for the citizens, I'm looking at the citizens in this county. And what's going on with these contractors cutting these water lines has got to stop. I talked with Brad this morning, bless his heart, and that Water Department for fixing these cut lines. He told me 10 to 12 cut lines. Some of these are mains. And when this happens, you got people that are out of water for hours. I've been one of them. He's, Brad told me that this has gotten really, really bad in the last three weeks. The inconveniences that this has caused hundreds of county citizens being without water is unacceptable. The hours that our Water Department has put in, countless hours, going behind these bunch of clients fixing these cuts is unacceptable. The contractor and Spectrum should be held accountable. They should have to pay for every water line that they have, that they cut. And there should be a fine. They should be looking at some pretty heavy fines, I think, to send a message to them. As far as I'm concerned, this contractor, if we got anything in there for Spectrum, if I could have my way, he would never lay another foot of cable in this county. I'm done with it, I'm over it. The people are over it. First off, and last, Brad's not here, and I hope he's not like repairing another line. But I just want to thank him and his team for their efforts. When you cut a line on main, it's not fixed in a minute or two. They've got to find stuff, they've got to have equipment, they've got to have manpower. It takes time. So I appreciate that, what they do. It's a dirty, wet, nasty job, and it's hard work. And I just want to let the Water Department know that I appreciate their effort.
Thank you, sir. And I can tell you, we are all very much on the same page. I know Commissioner Forsythe has done some background work on this. I was going to say, if you could share just a little.
I'll try not to be long-winded. After the Sheriff's comments and lots of other people, I engaged the NCDOT office in Elizabeth City, that's the district office, and also the NCDOT Division Office in Edenton. And I talked to the regional engineer, I talked to the regional director. Lots of discussion, talked on the phone extensively about the things, information provided by the Sheriff and our Utilities Department through the manager. I got to them. They insisted that there was a couple different contractors, one for Bright Speed, one for Spectrum or Charter, working independently, that they said their reports they get weekly from these guys were that there had been no incidents whatsoever in Gates County in the last several weeks. And to say I was strong-voiced on the phone with them would be an understatement. Luckily, I gave them a list of stuff. I actually asked it, "Can you please drive out there right now, today, and start coming daily if necessary?" I pointed out just what the Sheriff said and what the Commissioners have said, "We'd like to go after them to recover costs." They said, "Oh, well, just, you can go directly after that company." I'm like, "Well, if I'm not out there, if they move from time to time, we don't know which ones are doing where. We need you to give us that information." So they're working on giving us specifically not just Bright Speed or Spectrum's information, but the actual subcontractors that were permitted to be out here, give us their information so we can go after them for the cost. And I told them, more importantly, I says, "We just don't want this to keep happening. You need to stop them." And that's when, again, they said, "Well, we need the documentation." I said, "Here it is." Sent them an email with a bunch of it, 12 breaks, just what the Sheriff said, four or five mains. So I believe the veracity of what they were saying, they're going to try and help us rein these guys in, and they specifically said that one of these guys had been kicked out of a previous county. I'm pretty sure that's what they were explaining to me. And I said, "Well, then, why would you let them come to our county?" They didn't have an answer for that. More to come. We should get further information, and I asked them to show a presence out here. And so, again, Sheriff, I'd love it if you get a call, you hear something, call me immediately. I've got the phone numbers for all three of them people. I'm going to call them and beat up and down on them. And they actually were reasonable people. It seemed like we don't know if nobody's telling us. And that was their biggest thing, was is we hadn't heard anything from anybody in Gates County. And I said, "Well, you're going to start hearing from us now." But doesn't help us the past, but at least hopefully allow us to recover some of the funds for the future, so, for what that's worth.
Thank you. Yep. All right. So, yeah, just all that to say, we are, we are aware, we do hear those of us, like I said, the Sheriff, some of them are experiencing the same issues. Some of us have not had many issues with water, but it is a widespread issue that we are trying to move forward with. So we're going to move on to the next portion of the meeting. So at this time, I'd like to call Ms. Helen Yawer, County Extension Director, to the podium to present to the Board the Speedway to Healthy program. Let me make sure I said that right.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. The role of Kelly Boone will be played by Helen today. Kelly is our 4-H agent, and she's unable to be here tonight. She's at a meeting out of town. But we are very excited to bring Speedway to Healthy back to Gates County. We had this exhibit in 2016, I believe, the spring of 2016, and it was a wonderful exhibit, a wonderful experience. So I would like to just tell you a little bit about it. In 2013, North Carolina was labeled the 23rd state with the highest childhood obesity rates. 10 years later, we're now ranked 38th in overall prevalence, with 33.5% of children 10 to 17 obese or overweight, decreasing over the span of 10 years. During this time, experts were predicting that childhood obesity is placing youth on a potential course to the first generation to live shorter lives and less healthy lives than their parents. The North Carolina prevalence of overweight and obese children has fallen since 2003. According to the 2008 Pediatric Nutrition Surveillance System, which assesses weight status of children from low-income families participating in WIC, 32% of low-income children aged 2 to 5 are overweight or obese in North Carolina. The Speedway to Healthy project was adapted from the Body Walk Project, originally created by the Nutrition Services Department of the Kansas State Department of Education. With partial funding from the USDA Food and Nutrition Services, the Illinois Nutrition, Education, and Training Program produced an adaptation of, an adaption of this Kansas This is what it looks like from the outside. It is an 11-pit exhibit. It includes the starting line, the brain, the mouth, the stomach, the small intestine, the heart, the lungs, the kidneys, the bones, the muscles, and the skin. Students race through the exhibit in groups of eight to 10. In each pit stop, a volunteer educator engages students in a five-minute activity that focuses on healthy lifestyle choices and understand, understanding the impact those choices have on the body. The exhibit experience begins at the starting line pit stop, where students are given a food identification sticker and learn about the MyPlate model. After the starting line session, the children, as pieces of food, proceed to the brain, which is the second pit stop on the Speedway to Healthy. Here, they learn how the brain functions and what they can do to keep it healthy. When the children leave the brain, they enter the mouth to learn proper brushing and flossing. They are then swallowed through the esophagus and land in the stomach. From the stomach, they land in the small intestine, where they enact being squeezed in small pieces as the nutrients they possess escape into the bloodstream to be delivered throughout the body. Next, the children travel the path of the nutrients to the remaining pit stops, heart, lungs, kidney, bones, muscle. lungs, kidney, bones, muscle, and skin, in case you were worried about where we end up. Children exit the exhibit from the skin pit stop via a cut in the skin. The Speedway to Healthy project is designed for students in grades K-5. Oftentimes, a county will select one or two grade groups to go through. All three of our elementary schools are bringing all of their students. So we will have a day designated each day for the entire school to come through the We can't do this alone, so we collaborate with the library, the Mill Pond, the community center. We rely on volunteers. It takes about twenty-five volunteers per day to run this exhibit. Youth and adult volunteers in North Carolina contribute thousands of hours each year to strengthen communities and create strong foundations for the future. As these individuals engaged in the Speedway to Healthy, they were gaining new skills, generating new programs to serve their communities, building successful organizations, and fostering an ethic of service. Some of the impacts are listed here. I'm not gonna read them to you, but this was from our 2016 time that we ran it. Again, we will be having it here in March. March eighteenth through the twentieth will be the days that we are actually running the exhibit. We'd love to have you all stop by. If you're able to volunteer, great, we'll put you to work, but at least come and see what's going on. Walk through the exhibit yourself. It is extremely interactive. The kids get really excited, the teachers learn things, our volunteers learn things, and it is a great opportunity. Kelly is working with NCA and T University. They're, this exhibit is one of their programs, that they actually have a dedicated band that they'll come out, bring it to us. We spend a day setting it up with the help of many, many volunteers, and it comes down much more quickly than it does, than it goes up. So we'll take it down Thursday after everybody's finished. We are going to have a time when homeschoolers, or if you have kids, grandkids, that are going to school in a neighboring county and you'd like to bring them to see the exhibit, we'll have some time available for that as well.
Might have a youth volunteer for you.
We might sign her up. Do you all have any questions for me?
Well, hasn't Kelly here? She's awesome. My thirteen-year-old bros are to death, just for 4-H.
She is very awesome, but they have, they're calling it a retreat for 4-H professionals. So I, I hope she is retreating, but I'm afraid it's more of a working retreat than a, than a fun retreat. But I'll let her know that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. So next up, we have introduction of new hires, Mr. Warren Perry.
I wanna pull it close, I wanna get y'all close to the microphone. All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Mr. Sauer, Attorney Pat Godwin. Tonight, I'm introducing two new employees. With me, to my direct left, is Richard Pierce. He works in Building and Grinds with Crystal Phillips. He lives in Hurford County and previously worked with, I'm sorry, Precision Loop in Ahoski. To my far left is Kylie Cofield. He comes to us from Chauvin County. He works, bless his heart, with Public Utilities with Brad Arnold. But he has previously worked with the town of Edenton as well as the Newport New Shipyard. Please welcome these two new employees. And I think they wanted to say a few words, did you?
Just wanted to say, thank you for giving me the opportunity to work in Gates County.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to work for Gates County. And I also appreciate the sheriff for what he said about the Water Department.
You're a new local hero.
Yes, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Welcome aboard.
All right. Moving along into new business, yeah, he's had quite a, quite an entrance into the county with all the fun work he's had lately. Going into the new business, in your package, you'll find several budget amendments that need approval. Hopefully, the board has had an opportunity to review and are ready to vote. Mr. Robertson, if you could please come forward to address any questions from the Board.
And the Board did receive a description of each of the budget amendments earlier in the day, and hopefully those have clarified a few questions for Devin and Ronnie.
Yeah, appreciate that extra effort, because a lot of us aren't new to this. Y'all guys live and breathe this, so those extra explanations are really good.
Sometimes some of the information that I give may not be easy to share. I have to press that out at least later.
Yeah.
All right. So do we have any questions for Mr. Robertson going forward?
Well, I was all very detailed. Thank you for the further response.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. All right. So I will need a motion to approve budget amendments F-25-021, F-25-022, F-25-023, F-25-024, -025, -029, and -030.
So moved.
So seconded.
All right. If we can vote by a show of hands, all in favor? All right, any opposed? All right, so those will pass. The Clerk to the Board, Ms. Renee Draper is not-
One more item there.
Oh, did we? I'm sorry. I apologize.
I had alerted you, we might need a budget amendment, but Mr. Robertson worked diligently this afternoon to find the means to absorb the cost for our contract amendment with our auditor, Baldwin and Jenkins. We are fortunate tonight that one of their partners, Ms. Leanne Bagasala, is with us this evening. William and I spent a good part of our day with her yesterday, running through the last remaining items. And we hope to have this packet sent to the LGC by the end of March and in front of the Board in April. And we ask your support for the contract amendment as received this afternoon.
Okay, perfect. Is there any discussion on that? Any questions?
Which, what number is that? Which one is that? I saw in the summary here-
So this was the amendment?
It's, it's just a contract amendment-
Okay.
-that was attached with your amendment.
I got you.
All right. Y'all know that. So if we have any discussion, if not, if we could get a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
All right. We go into a vote, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, and that passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, County Manager, because I did overlook that amendment.
Thank you so much.
Okay. So now, we're gonna go to the Board. The report from the Clerk to the Board is gonna be done by County Manager, as our Clerk to the Board is absent tonight. So we have a memo provided in the packet that we can refer to as we get the updates.
Well, thank you very much. First, Renee wanted me to send her regrets. She's come down with the Gates County bug of sorts. She indicates that we have confirmed for your April meeting that we'll have an update on the first year of operations of the Perquimans and Gates 911 Center. Also that evening, we'll have our Regional Director, Ms. Bobby Lowe, present the Trillium Annual Report. We have a vacancy that's been advertised for the Gates County ABC Board. No candidates have yet submitted their names, and that's a very critical Board. If you have colleagues or friends you'd like to suggest that they apply, that'd be great. Next, she indicates that we have a candidate for the Library and Tourism Advisory Board, and she indicates that the Board has a copy of the application from Mr. Nicholas Epps.
So we should have that in your packets. Let's look and see. I know sometimes we'll invite them up if they're present, but I do not see Mr. Epps. Okay.
So I'm listed as one of the references, but I would make a motion.
Okay.
If that's acceptable, maybe a reference until you have for us to accept him for the appointment.
All right, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right, we're gonna go ahead into a vote, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, so that carries through. We can let Mr. Epps know that he be joining the Gates-
Next item-
Could I jump in here?
Sure.
Because we don't talk here. We also have the opening on the Albemarle Commission, the at-large, that we're entitled to. Is that gonna be under new business?
That's under, that's also on-
Oh, I see it, I'm sorry, I apologize.
That's okay, take it.
Well, I was just gonna say, I'd like to, I've talked to, and he's already serving on another Board, but I'd like to nominate Mr. Brian Silvers for that position. I've talked to him about the responsibilities. He said he's willing to do that. And I think he participates in a lot of stuff, a lot of people see him in the community.
He does.
Great personality for doing it, very engaged. I think he'd be a great representative. So I'd make a motion that we accept Mr. Brian Silvers for that position.
Okay. And I'm just gonna defer, just so we can have this-
Sure.
-there for the County Manager, is, if it's appropriate for us to move forward with a motion, or do we have to wait for an applicant to come forward?
He has an application on file.
On file? Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
He's actually chairman of the Planning and Zoning Board.
Perfect.
So I think it'd be redundant for him to have to fill out another application.
Perfect. All right, so we have a motion on the floor for Mr. Brian Silvers to be appointed to the Albemarle Commission.
I second that motion.
Second, all in favor? All right, any opposed? Okay, so we'll add Mr. Silvers to the Albemarle Commission.
An item last from Renee Draper. She mentioned this, I think, in the Board's planning session a few weeks back. She has prepared a social media terms of use policy, and she has used this, or developed this using the model provided by the School of Government. She has signed up to take the course that they are offering on social media management and improvements, best practices. And, and one of the pre-class assignments is to bring a copy of your, of your county's policy. She doesn't wanna go empty-handed, so if, if the Board would kindly entertain this, I think if she comes back with suggestions, we could make modifications, but she asks for your approval tonight.
Okay. Do we have any comments or amendments that-
Well, I had some questions. I thought that might be the case, but one of the things I was, it doesn't have to be resolved as part of this policy, but I was hoping, did we talk about in here whether or not posts are allowed by non-county employees? That was my first question. Should this address that? Not saying it has to. And then, setting terms like if we have, if we use Facebook, like Facebook Live, like other localities do, instead of YouTube, will we allow for citizens to post on that during meetings? That would be a question I think we should have in a policy. And then, whether or not it would be Facebook Live. And then, for each department, will we set a policy of allowing each department, say, to have two posts a day or some, put some type of limit on it? Because I did have one of the other counties, when we talked to them, say that was a problem. They had one particular overly zealous department started posting ten to fifteen things a day, and nobody else's stuff would show up.
Okay.
So I'm not saying we have to include that here, but those are things we might wanna consider adding or adjusting-
Okay.
-as we go forward.
Okay.
So we say we're comfortable approving this and possibly amending after she takes that class?
Yeah. Facilitate her going forward.
Right, perfect. Okay. Well, if we can get a motion to approve what we have in front of us.
I got, that's me.
All right, second.
I second it.
All right, and all in favor? All right, any opposed? Okay, so we are gonna move forward with the County Manager report and updates.
Just briefly, we have a calendar of budget meetings coming up for later this month. I don't have that calendar in front of me, but I will make sure that Renee and I get that out to you. We have blocked out, I think, four different afternoons that the Chair has helped us schedule so that you'll have some in-depth time with all of the county departments and programs. I believe also, we have upcoming a joint meeting Tuesday next week, which is March, two o'clock, to meet with the Board of Education. And that's all I have.
Okay.
So, the only question is about the joint meeting. They understand from talking to the Superintendent that they're intending to have their, the study contractor that they're proposing to select that they're doing, I mean, it's all theirs, but they've invited us, they said, to come listen to that. That's what I understood to be the case, not to be a full joint meeting in that case.
So the March fourth, I think it was March fourth, I'm trying to place the date in my head. I left my planner at home and I'm all out of sorts, is the joint meeting with them that we had requested.
Right, so we come, or can, can, panning the two into one, because that's, I think we need to make sure we don't be seen as us and them together approving who's there.
Well, part of the agreement that we had, had come to a year and a half or so ago, we mentioned when we had done the allotment of funds to them, was that we were gonna have quarterly meetings, updates, that kind of thing. So this is a part of that process, not necessarily a part of what-
So if they, I guess what I'm getting at is-
We're gonna have a list of items for discussion-
Okay.
-that we'll need to adhere to, because that's what's gonna be presented as being discussed.
Well, I guess that's my point, is, is I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna concur with us having a joint meeting where we sort of jointly have to concur or approve their contractor. I think that's their responsibility.
Yeah, it's their responsibility.
I agree. Yeah, that's, that's theirs.
Okay, thanks.
No, definitely on board with that. Okay? Well, I'm going to work down the line for the Commissioners' update, so we'll start down with Commissioner Berryman.
All right, well, we, as everyone knows, I've been appointed to a newly committee, and we've been working on joint, creating that, which is the Merchants Commerce Center Committee. We, we have filled our committee with five members. We had our first meeting this, this past Monday. It was a pretty good meeting where we banded around some good ideas and discussions as far as how we can use that area to further support the, and, and better serve the county. One of the first things we need to do is put our ideas on a piece of paper, and then for us to share those ideas with the whole county of what we'd like, what we would like to see out there. So we're, through our last meeting, County Commissioners' meeting, we got approval to engage Summit, who did the last few renderings that had been a part of that. And so, we're gonna update some of those, those renderings and, and put our thought on those, so we can better share our thoughts with the County Commissioners and the, and the county itself. So we're, we're working through that now. Summit has been contacted. Ms. Lisa reached out to them today and had a good conversation with them. So we, it'll be a couple of weeks before they can work us into their docket to have a meeting with them, to talk about what we would like to see and what we're gonna work on out there. And once we get to that point, then we'll be able to, you know, show those renderings to everybody and what we would like to do. And as well, once we get to a point of, yeah, this is kind of what the plan is to, to be put out there, then from there, we would like to engage the North Carolina DOT about what's the, what's the correct thing to do out there on 158, because there was a study done long, long ago, that it needed to be at least a turnaling put in there. And so, there's some discussion that we have to have at some point in time before we can really expand and add any additional businesses out there. And, but we've got some really good feedback on that. And so, once we, we get the, the first step, which is rendering, so we can do a study to how that will affect the traffic flow of that area, and then from there, we can engage the North Carolina DOT as far as doing that study, and then we can hopefully get them to widen the road through there, if that's what the study shows.
All right. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, first of all-
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank all the citizens for coming out tonight. It makes a difference to see the participation, see the faces sitting in the crowd, it does. I'm glad that y'all are showing interest in what we have in store for Gates County. We had, well, we, so we kicked off the year with the Public Health and Safety Committee, January, February, and had another meeting last night that I was not able to attend. And that's a good thing. I'm glad. They still had the meeting, whether I'm there or not, the commissioner does not have to be there. They're moving forward, they're talking, Sheriff's Department, EMS, EM, they're all collaborating on what Gates County needs. And I can see in the very, very, very near future that that committee is gonna take off and is gonna do great things for this county. They've got the best interests of this county, whether it's where a fire hydrant is needed, or one needs to be repaired, or what EM and EMS need to collaborate on. It's a good thing, big things are coming. I was telling Mr. Bryant, you need money, come to me, I'll see if I can find it. So thank you to the staff, with all the weather conditions and everything. We were out here for our work session around fluoride. We're still working on fluoride and what the path forward is on that. And coming up, the public utilities and building grounds, they were putting rock salt out to keep our citizens and employees safe. So I do appreciate working in the inclement weather like they were. Say the least for the water department over the last three weeks or so. Yes, I was one of those citizens without water, and I completely understand. It is aggravating. You try to do something good and something bad comes out of it, you know? We are 97% complete on broadband, so we're gonna get there. Bear with us, we're gonna work with DOT and everything, try to start moving these contractors in the right direction. But thank you to the water department for all the hours spent. And I saw Brad right down the road from my house. It was Sunday, I just passed Sunday, or Sunday before, and I went down there and checked on him. I said, "Don't mind me. Do y'all need anything to eat? Need any water?" You know, because they are, they were, it was muddy, and I felt bad for them. And then I also want to say thank you to all the first responders. Sheriff came up here and gave his report, and you can see the passion, and I appreciate that passion. And all of our first responders have that same passion that you see in our sheriff. And that's a big plus for the citizens in Gates County. There will be a report coming out before too long. Mr. Jonathan Nixon and probably Ms. Julie Solzby will be coming over there, the ones that run the proquemmons, Gates E-911 Center, and giving us an in-depth report out. You'll probably be surprised by some of the numbers of the amount of calls that the Sheriff's Department runs in what we call little old Gates County. They'll surprise you. They'll surprise you. The Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, EMS, EM, Forest Street, Animal Control, you will be surprised at the amount of calls that run through the E-911 Center and to our first responders. So, once again, thank y'all for coming out, and look forward to seeing you much.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Mr. Rattrick?
Good evening, Gates County citizens. I'm glad to be back. I've been out for the last two months, but it's a blessing to be back. Start off on the ARHS report. I had an opportunity last year to participate in this data. The data is Community Health Assessment, data that we gather information concerning Gates County, a health assessment for Gates County. And here's a summary of the data that was collected. I attended the ARHS meeting last night, and this is the summary of the things that we, of the data that we compiled from the participation that we did last year. Gates County has a higher rate of chronic conditions such as hypertension and stroke. Also, we found that cardiovascular disease and, excuse me, schematic stroke hospitalization rates are higher compared to others in the state. Gates County has lower than state averages rates of all types of health providers, and also subsidies and dental providers. A higher percentage of Gates County adults are smokers, and also tobacco spending is relatively high across the county. Compared to the state of North Carolina, Gates County has a higher rate of food deficiencies among children, and food costs is very, for low-income residents, low food access is prevalent. For the DSS report, Gates House assisted living facility is currently undergoing a sale and transfer of ownership. The Gates House was denied licensure due to the lapse of the active license while doing this transition. The denial is being appealed, and a hearing is projected to be in May or June. Clients still, however, can enroll and participate in the services at the Gates House during this time. My Trillium Health Resource Update, we're looking in April to have assimilation. However, there's assimilation that's gonna be in Warranton, North Carolina. A supporting children early assimilation will be held on Wednesday, March 26, 2025. Check-in begins at 8:30 a.m. The event is 9 a.m. until 11:30 a.m. At the Armory Civic Center, address 301 U.S. Highway, 158 Business East, Warranton, North Carolina. The Supporting Children Early Assimilation gives kids with disabilities the tools they need for lifelong success. The assimilation depicts challenges in the areas of services and resources that families of kids with disabilities may encounter. Navigating these barriers will enable participants to learn about the support systems that are available for them. And you can register for this free event, you can register at registration.socio events forward slash e forward slash moran s c e s to secure your spot. At assimilation, light refreshments will be served. Also, in lieu of Black History Month, happy Black History Month, everyone. Gates County has numerous outstanding African-Americans, but I'm gonna mention just three. And I wanna commend Dr. Riddick for acknowledging the Gates County Community Partnership on their accomplishment and recognition in the Crossroad article. But the three I wanna mention tonight, first is Major General Richard Allen Harrison. He's the highest-ranking military officer in Gates County history. A two-star general, Richard Harrison is the commander of the 32nd Air and Missile Defense Command at Fort Bliss, Texas. Second, I want to mention Principal T.S. Cooper. He was the principal of Gates Institute, now known as T.S. Cooper Elementary School, which was the first African-American high school in Gates County. And last, I wanna mention Ms. Annie Holland. She was a Gates County educator, known for founding the first Black Parent Teacher Association in North Carolina. She was also the state supervisor of Black elementary schools. Aunt Holland served as state demonstrating agent for the June Fund, which promotes rural Black education. And I wanna say this last, Black history is American history. It's important that we have Black history, because it displays the positive examples that indicates one's potential through the accomplishments of African-Americans honoring and inspiring Black excellence. And that concludes my update for tonight.
All right. Thank you, sir. And then, Mr. Forsythe?
I'll try to be briefer than normal. It's funny, I'll tag on since you brought that up. It's really cool, is I've got five kids, and the last two are in middle school, the other three have graduated and went through the system. And each year, when this time has come, and they've generally, when they've been in a social studies class or history class, they've always been given a topic of, hey, pick a Black history person to do. And it's funny, every year I've learned something from it. And this year is really cool, because, I mean, I pride myself as being a city kid who ended up growing up on a farm, peanut farm. And this year, my son picked George Washington Carver, and I thought I knew about him generally. But it's really funny, after watching him do his research and all, to see all the accomplishments he did for farmers. I mean, really, the godfather of crop rotations and all the research he did on peanut crops and others is really pretty cool. I think the guy had something like 300 inventions that he had done. So I think it is, I think you're right. It's about everybody's history, about Americans, and an area where we so heavily agriculture, for my kid to get, point that out to me, it's a pretty neat opportunity. I appreciate that. And now, moving on, I did have a couple kind of points I wanted to note. I know that in talking about the board, Chairman Berryman's on and all, I was just kinda curious, was there a conscious decision to go back to Summit, or was there any selection process that went on? Not asking for that, just that kinda runs in my head, because I'm sure somebody's gonna end up asking. And then, the other thing, when you talk about the Gates County Center there, you know, the turn lane, that DOT, in talking to them, I hadn't spread that in the earlier discussion, but DOT did provide us with the list of their top projects. They have the big project list, and the only thing Gates County had on there was the widening of 13, the north end of it past Tar Hill, as being one of their big projects. And not showing that funded this year, being only the engineering part of it being funded for the coming year, which means it's probably a year or two out at least before any construction could possibly go on if it does. But then on the smaller projects, the 10 smaller projects they had listed, the only thing Gates had, and it's listed, I think, number nine or 10 on that list of smaller projects, is in fact a turn lane they had, but it's a very small turn lane, and it's actually unfunded of any kind, but it's on their list for now. And when I engaged them and asked about this, they did imply strongly, they were trying to not poke us in the eye, but that they had not heard from Gates County, and they were not getting Gates County's priorities from us. They did say that, you know, the staff might be engaging them somewhat, but they did look for the commissioners to give them some direct input and prioritize. So I think what you're talking about, Commissioner Berryman, I think that'd be highly advised what we come back and tell them, because if they perceive they're only gonna give us a 200-foot turn lane only, when in fact, your work ends up defining that, no, we're gonna need a, you know, 5,000-foot turn lane from Easton's on, then they need to know about that now while they're in the early stages, and no point in having them build a short one, only to have it need to be replaced within two or three years. So that's worthwhile. The other part, too, that I didn't pin on, following up with the sheriff and all the work that our water department's done, I do wanna point out that even though the water is what we primarily thought about, I know I personally have a friend that's on 137 that I talked to today. She went off for the weekend, and when her and her husband came back, there were, you know, backhoe tracks all across her front yard. She has a very nice yard, she takes a lot of pride in the appearance of her home, and marks all over it, and they had cut her phone lines. And it was not the company putting in the fiber optic that was her service provider. And when she engaged about having it repaired, they pretty much told her it'd be the end of March before they could get to her. And I said, "Well, that's terrible." And she says, "Well, they cut it three months ago, and I had to wait a month then." So this is the second time hers has been cut. And if she happened to call me as a friend and tell me, I'm wondering how many other people out there have had their lines cut, and they're not even bothering to call and tell anybody. So I think we may only be seen the tip of the iceberg, even though it's water and important, there might be a lot more happening out there. So I really would stress that we need to take whatever action we can to make folks pay for the damage they're doing. So I'll limit my comments to that.
All right. Thank you, sir. Okay, I'm gonna go in. Before I get into the updates, I do have one thing to present. We've been receiving some communication for a while now from a Ms. Debbie Swick in regard to wanting support for a request for Bill 20 to ban the intentional release of helium balloons. It's something that came in the email for a while, but she was able now to get a Senate bill in motion. And per conversation with her, she would be very pleased if we could possibly draft a resolution to support this bill and get it sent into our Senator, Senator Hennig, and she also mentioned two other senators that were supporting this bill. And I will say, they're out of our district, and I cannot recall the names of both right now, but open to discussion about this, and if we see fit in supporting a resolution to support this bill, if we could direct the staff to draft the resolution to send out. Is there any questions, comments, concerns?
Everybody looks at me like they know I got a comment. I do. This clearly seems to be a state law issue. I got the email, too. In fact, I've got it like three times from the individual.
Yeah.
And quite frankly, I don't know why we picked this one item for us to spend time and effort on, to reach out to the state government. I do think it's a state or federal issue, not really a local government issue. And not having heard from this person directly, other than by numerous emails, I'm not inclined to wanna do anything, but that's just my personal opinion.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I was gonna reach out to Bobby Hennig before I had many more comments, just to...
Okay. Well, we can handle it a couple of ways. If we wanna do a motion to either say no, or to approve, or if we wanna just table it until next month and have the opportunity to reach out to our senator, we can do that as well.
I would want to table that.
Table it? Okay. Sounds great. Appreciate it. All right. So now we'll go into the chair update. I first want to say, earlier when I was reading all of those zero two twos, I had to smile back for a moment, because my former teacher, Ms. Glenda Pruden-Riddick, has called us out before for saying "oh" instead of zero, and she's sitting over there. So I was very cautious as I was reading this evening to make sure that I honored her request for us to use the term "zero" for zeros.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So just a little bit, the past couple of months have been pretty busy. We have had the Leading Your Governing Body training, myself, our vice chair, we had Commissioner Forsythe and County Manager Sauer that attended in Raleigh on January 30th. It was very educational, engaging, we had a lot of takeaways, looking at how we'll be looking going forward, how we handle things with Code of Ethics and bylaws, closed session, voting, show of hands, different things. So just being able to sit in the same room with the other county leaders was encouraging, and the ideas that came forth were pretty helpful. So I'm looking forward to moving forward with those. Excited about the social media that we are moving forward with tonight. That's an achievement, I think. Newspapers are still a thing for some, but social media is the way to go for most. So I think, over the next couple of months, as we have our clerk go through that training and we get that page active, I'm excited to see, excited to see where it goes. The EMS board met earlier this month. That was very interesting to me. Most people know my passion is first response, and also with the opioid task force and the reentry, like, all of those public service-type things kinda go into my heart there. There were very thorough updates, budget discussions, they're meeting again in the late summer. I'm looking forward to the budget presentation the end of March. That's just kind of something that I typically enjoy. Also, was able to attend the ABC Board meeting and administer the oath to Mr. Ketchrel. We do have another member of the board that needs the oath administered as well. They did push that they have that vacancy, that they would love to see filled. So again, if you know of anybody interested, have them reach out to the office. They are going to be the ABC Board on the March agenda, I believe, to come and present some information then. February 19th, the day of our great big snow, we had a work session, had to postpone all of the afternoon events, which is why we're here tonight. We went over the Capitol projects, infrastructure... Uh, we went over the Capitol projects, infrastructure, um, revaluation. It was very informative, very engaging. Um, we have several next steps being considered, we're waiting for studies, those kind of things. But just to know that wells, the fluoride, those topics are staying at the forefront of conversation and we are trying to move forward, um, with a solution that, that helps us all. This past Saturday night, myself and Commissioner Berryman and County Manager attended Gatesville Volunteer Fire Department's Ladies Night. Uh, they were just showing appreciation. As was said, these are volunteers, the first responders. Super thankful for them. Chief Ashley, uh, had very encouraging things to say about the Brooklyn Skates 911 consolidation. And I will say, he was one of the ones who raised a lot of concerns last year when we were talking about the consolidation. So it was very encouraging to hear the things he had to say and the, um, positive outcome that he's seen from this. And we will again have that update from the 911 Center in April. Trying to think here. Next month, I will not be present for our March meeting. Vice Chair Craddock will be taking over myself. Chief Butts, uh, new peer support, I believe, and a couple of other staff, if I'm not mistaken, are going to be traveling to Raleigh for the Reducing Overdose Summit. I'm very excited about that. Again, that goes with the opioid task force and the, um, and the reentry in a way, kind of all ties together. Um, I know Ms. Bobby Lowe will be in attendance as well. So there's a lot of faces that are typically here that will not be here next month as we travel across the state to, to see, um, to receive more education, I guess, and, and see what the rest of the state is doing on moving forward. At this point, we are going to open it up for our second public comment period. Let's see. This public comment period is going to have a, um, three-minute time allowance for the end and, how do you go ahead and come to the podium? If you could just state your name and the voting district you're in.
Hello, I'm Sam Saul in Gates County. Welcome, Madam Chair, Commissioners, uh, and Sauer. Not sure who to ask, but since we've got everybody here, the town of Gatesville has its own webpage. And I love to get a link off the Gates County page for Gatesville Town. Not probably what y'all were expecting us to come up and talk about.
Right.
But, uh, like I said, I don't know if it's possible, whatever, I thought I'd mention and go, you have some thoughts?
I think we can work on that, sir.
Okay.
It's a great suggestion.
Gatesville.org. Thank you very much.
Is, is that a, is it strictly a webpage or do y'all have like a Facebook page as well, or?
No.
No, it's a webpage.
Okay.
We try to put a lot of information about meetings coming up for it and, you know, things happening in town and stuff like that.
Right. All right. Well, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate. Okay. Okay, even for just a moment, if there were any other comments? Okay. We'll flip my page back over. All right, well, we are now going to go into closed session pursuant to NC General Statute 143381, or 31811A3. Purpose Attorney Client Privilege for Discussion of Existing Litigation Regarding, uh, File Number 24C V001137, um, 360, Clyde Tia Riddick, plaintiff versus Warren Perry, Individual Capacity Scott Sauer, Individual Capacity in Gates County, A Governmental Entity Defendants. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
So moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Uh.
All right. Any opposed? Okay. All right, well, it passes, so we will be going into closed session. There will not be any action taken following. We thank you all for joining us tonight. And again, I'll, I'll mimic what Commissioner Craddock said, Vice Chair Craddock said with, it's nice to see a full house.
Okay, all right if we can get a motion to come out of closed session.
Sub motion.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Uh.
Uh, all right, any oppose? All right, we are out of closed session if I could get a motion to adjourn.
Sub motion.
So second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
All right, we are adjourned.
All right.